I hereby call to order the August 20th regular board meeting of the Chico Unified School Board, Board of Education. At this point we will recess into closed session unless there are any public comments on closed session. Seeing none, into closed session we go.
Thank you for coming. I would like to call to order the regular board meeting for the Chico Unified School District Board of Trustees for August 20th, 2025. We have been in closed session. In closed session, we did take one action, which was to approve the appointment of a new assistant principal to Bidwell Junior High. Ms. Johnson, you want to come on up here?
Yeah.
Excellent.[1035.08][1035.08](applause)
Well, thank you, Board, and thank you, admin team over here. I am so honored to be officially take off that interim over my door and take over the new role as Vice Principal at Bidwell Junior High. Bidwell Junior High is a special place for me. I went there. I've taught there for 10 years. I have an amazing boss who is a mentor to me, and I'm just so looking forward to continuing growing young minds and supporting teachers and building relationships. So I really appreciate it.
We are thrilled to have you. Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you.[1073.71][1073.71](applause)
And that was the only action that we took in closed session. So we are going to move on. At this point, I would like you all to rise and join me in the flag salute.[1091.67][1091.67](pause) And now that I've got a password for my computer, I can actually join the meeting. Excellent. I'm going to hand it over at this point to Superintendent Blake for the superintendent's report and awards.
All right. Thank you. We are very excited. We had some fabulous people working over the summer, some really wonderful classified folks. And tonight, I'm going to be sending it over to Vincent Sero to share some good news with us.
Good evening. I'm super excited by the opportunity to get to showcase one of our wonderful folks that works in the nutrition, in the Nutrition Services Department, Josiah Breeheart, if you want to come up, let's kind of get an opportunity to talk about you. I got the opportunity to meet him many, many, many years ago before he started working in our department. He worked at McManus in the after-school program, and that was when we were getting started with our supper program. And so I had the opportunity to work side by side with him as we were working with, in two different capacities in his, in his, in his role. But to get to see him work side by side with the kids and how excited he was every single day to be with them and to just see his enthusiasm to be around them. I knew that we needed to have him in our department, and he came over and he worked for us, and then eventually migrated over and works for us full-time now. And it's amazing. He's over at Chico High. He is the, the, the light, the light when we walk in the door every day. He's always smiling. He's always has everybody. He's so positive. It's super cool to go over and watch him, watch him take care of the kids every day. It's just, they go to him and they just, he has the longest line. It's amazing. And so I thank you so much for what you do and, and being an inspiration and being such a positive person for, for all the kids at Chico Unified and all the places that you've been, because you've been so many places. Thank you.
Thanks, Dave.
Yeah?[1230.33][1230.33](applause) Take a picture. Yep, we'll put you in the middle. I'm going to knock things over. That's right, you're good. All right, thank you. Right on. In that case, do we have item five announcements? Do we have any announcements from the board for the community? I would just like to say, welcome back. It is super exciting to start off the 25-26 school year. It sounds like it's been a pretty strong start so far, and we're looking forward to hearing more about it and having an amazing school year. Anybody else have, yeah?
No, that's okay. I just, to the second, but Tom, I'll just say.
I wanted to thank CUSD and its classified staff and CUTA and CSEA for an amazing CUSD all-staff barbecue was so great. And I know that our nutrition staff prepared the food. And it was just, it was, I've only been to two of them because I, I, I went last fall, and this, the attendance this year was amazing. It was, it was crazy good. And that, I just wanted to thank everyone. I saw lots of our staff helping to empty trash cans. And I just want to say, you know, thank you so much for all the effort. And it was a really lovely time. And then I also wanted to say that Julie Kissel, when she took me through the McManus site, which is amazing, you guys, if you haven't seen it, you should go. But she said that Loma Vista is her favorite site. And my little grandson started at preschool yesterday. And I got to see the site today. I got to go drop him off this morning. And it is amazing. So I just want to thank Chico Unified for, and, and, you know, maintenance and operations for being so thoughtful. And the whole planning, that's the, I know that you were, you've been on the, the facilities, meaning, you know, and it's just, it's just what a great thing to be offering our, our public. So, thank you.
Excellent. Any other announcements?
Something.
Please.
I think this is my first full year retired, so it felt like it when I was driving by schools and saying, oh, I'm not going there to set up this year. And the all-staff barbecue is the first one I think I've ever missed. I was so sad. I was up in Portland playing grandma, so I was super happy, but I was really sad that I missed it. And it looked like a huge turnout. And every year is just gets better and better, which says a lot about the relationship between the district and classified and certificated staff, that there really is a relationship there, and that we can get together and have fun and have a really good time.
Excellent. Thank you. We are going to move on to items from the floor. Items from the floor, for those of you who remember, are for items that are not on the agenda. Anyone can bring an item to discuss with the public and the board. We do have one student signed up to speak today. Is Gabby here with us?
(noise)
Hi. So, come, come on up, and then I'll give you the rules, all right, in case you don't know. First of all, thank you for coming. Yeah, it's, can be awkward for students to speak in front of us, and we're thrilled to have you. There is a timer back there that says three minutes. We will give you a quick heads up. Shepard will let you know when we've got 30 seconds left, just so you know where you're at time-wise, okay? Awesome. What do you have to say?
Um, hello, my name is Gabriella Ward, and I am a freshman at PV, and I want to share my thoughts on Chromebooks. When I was in second grade, we did have Chromebooks, and we only used it for minimal assignments and things like that. But then shortly after, in my third grade year, the pandemic hit, and then we used it for more and more assignments. And since then, I've been dragged deeper and deeper into the rabbit hole of YouTube and things like that, which have greatly impacted my life ever since. As time went on, oops, sorry, as time went on, I definitely struggled with assignments. I wasn't able to hit the grades that I know I was able to meet, that I had the ability to meet, but I wasn't able to again because of the rabbit hole that I was dragged into. And I did notice a lot at schools that I have been to, like people are carrying around their Chromebooks during passing period or nutrition break and things like that, like they're addicted to it. And I don't think that's very healthy in my own expertise. When I was in fifth grade, I remember distinctly saying that I didn't like the Chromebook, and I would rather for things to be back on paper. And because of that, I think that Chromebook should be limited more in both access and usage, because a lot of students have been getting distracted, including myself. Thank you.
Thank you.[1598.13][1598.13](applause) And while we cannot, of course, speak to items from the floor, I can, on a totally unrelated note, point out that we have an upcoming, in a future board meeting coming up shortly, we have a workshop on our technology use policy. If anyone is interested in attending that meeting, September 3rd.
Yes.
And that's exactly the kind of feedback that might be interested, might be good at those meetings. I'd also like to point out that we have another speaker who signed up, Ed Rona, who does not appear, was able to make it. He sent us an email. Usually, he uses these meetings to announce the VFW essay competitions, which are a lovely tradition, something that our schools always participate in. And I'm sure that Mr. Rona will, or has already distribute the information to the schools for those, so we're looking forward to that. Please.
Thank you, Tom. Yes, I did too get a, an email from him, and since then, reached out to our district, "Spread the word to everybody" person over there, Erica, who's hiding behind the computer. And she, Erica, provided notice to our education administrators, who then in turn are getting it to the principals, who will then in turn get it to department chairs and anyone else who might have a student interested in the competition. Yes, there's a strategic amount of money that could be used for scholarships, and it's been a longstanding competition that the BFW has supported. So I appreciate Erica's help in getting that information out. And I'm sorry, Mr. Rona is not here.
I am as well. It's always kind of a tradition at the beginning of the school year to, to see him and have him talk about that. But it is a wonderful opportunity for students and, you know, to gain some acclaim for the amazing writers we have within our district. So hopefully, people continue to take advantage of that program.
And even teachers.
And even teachers, absolutely. That said, there are no other speakers listed for items from the floor. Does anybody from the public wish to address an item not on the agenda at this time? Seeing the takers, we are going to move on to item seven, which is the consent calendar. Before we move on the consent calendar, is there, are there any questions? Would anyone like to pull any items from the consent calendar for further discussion? Okay, great. In that case, is there any public comment on items from the consent calendar? Okay. Do we have a motion regarding the consent calendar?
I'll motion to approve.
I'll second.
All right. We have a motion by Member Olson and a second by Member Hayes. Any debate or discussion?
Yeah.
All right, seeing none, this is our first public action of the evening, so I'm going to ask for a roll call vote, starting with Member Olson.
Olson, aye.
How can I?
Conkin, aye.
Lando, aye.
Hayes, aye.
Robinson, aye.
I know Conkin's mic wasn't working, but that was unanimous. All right, we are unanimous. Thank you very much. I'm off to a kind of a rocky start. I'm not on my kilter yet today and I apologize to you guys. If I'm, and for, for real, if I miss something, please just let me know. Rather be corrected than be wrong. Thank you. All right, we're gonna move on to, um, what I'm most excited about. Um, item 811 is an informational update on how opening day went.
Thank you. I would like to invite the Ed Services team up to, uh, sit with me in case there are any other questions that we can all provide to you. But for right now, I would love you to sit back, uh, watch the slideshow in live time because as the school year just started two days ago, we have added some additional pictures. So please keep your eyes peeled on the live screens over here. And, uh, remembering too, that these pictures that we're gonna show you and, and in here are just a small sample of all that has gone on. It's virtually impossible to, to capture everything that's gone on with all of our 23 sites, but, um, this is a small sampling of that that we hope to capture the best that we could. So, uh, sit back and enjoy. We do have a list of things that we go through here to open up this presentation and, and it's taking a step back. It's not just the beginning of the school year, but all of the things that happened during the summer to get our schools up and ready to go. And there are many of them, as you'll see. Tonight, we'll talk to you about our summer programs for students. We'll talk about professional development for staff. We'll look at enrollment. We'll talk about co and extracurricular participation, uh, and technology, school construction, to name a few things here. So, um, we've prepared this presentation for you to include a variety of these, of these activities, as I mentioned, because so much does go on. An example are these pictures right here. These are three photos from our August 12th Back to School Drive. This was held at Bidwell Junior High. Over 100 students attended. They completed registrations. They received school supplies and connected with internet and transportation resources. Big thank you to our Foster Youth and Liaison Jamie McLaughlin and our team of targeted case managers for putting on this event. Um, it is well-attended and enjoyed by all. Starting with our summer programs here, uh, for our TK students, transitional kindergarten to grade 12 participation. We did have a June summer camp for TK through sixth grade. That was four weeks, over 1,000 students, almost 1,500 students attended. This was held right after school ended in June. So they went right into summer camp. And as you can see from the photos here, they had a lot of fun. They would go to the movies together, uh, which looks like a movie poster in my mind, looking at that with them. And they also got to meet several critters, including this alligator, up close and personal. Uh, kids love it. It's well-attended and it's, it's a lot of fun for them. We also did have early back camp, which is held the week of August 4th through 8th. We welcomed back TK through fifth graders for one week. As you can see, there were 330, 366 kids. And then the incoming sixth graders also come back for a week with 162 of them. A lot of fun for these guys. Continuing on with our summer, uh, programs, we have high school credit recovery with almost 450 students in attendance this summer. Junior high credit recovery, sixth grade early back, as I mentioned. We also have our extended school year, which serves our pre-kindergarten through our adult students with a total of 286 students participating totally with that.
Can I interrupt you for just one moment? Ask a quick question? I'm so sorry.
Sure.
Um, the early back for sixth grade, um, is that open just to returning students or can new students who maybe want to get, you know, kind of the lay of the land of, of Chico Unified attend those as well?
I think it was any student that was, uh, registered to attend had the opportunity to go, yeah. And it's a, it's a great thing. I, people love it. Kids talk about it. Um, you'll hear, see a little, a picture again down the way here from web. Um, but it, it's a good time.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, I also had a question about the early back, not just at sixth grade, but at the other levels. Um, how do we get, uh, how, how is that information given to our parents and, and students?
So our expanded learning, our after-school programs run this. So they do send it out to, um, schools. They send it out, I believe, areas of communication as well. So not all families can participate as they might have summer plans during that time or things coming up because it is right before school starts up again. But, uh, we do have a lot of kids that, that attend. Yeah. This picture is, uh, one of my favorites in this, in this presentation. It really captures our nutritious, nutrition services team's spirit. They worked hard during the summer. They served lunches free of charge all summer long, from June 9th through August 8th. They served those lunches Monday through Friday at three locations in town, Degarmo Park, Hooker Oak Park, and Bidwell Junior High. On to professional development. August hit and, uh, we had a lot of professional development opportunities for staff. There was a multi-tiered system of supports, uh, training on August 7th. New teacher training was, uh, had, and we've continued to have those over the last several years. They've been very beneficial for our new teachers. August 11th and then another day for our teachers, uh, new to our special education staff here, August 12th. Community schools, trauma-informed practices, and you'll see more pictures as I continue on here, as well as intensive behavior interventionists or our IBI training as well. This, uh, also are pictures of our administrative advanced training that we host August 6th. That's kind of the first one to kick it off. As I mentioned, uh, some of these pictures are from things in the, in the, uh, previous slide that were mentioned. The top picture is our, uh, IBI training, our interventionist training. It was a full room, uh, widely regarded as one of the best trainings that they go to during the year. And I love to see all of the participation there. We have what we called our excellent SEL, proactive strategies for all learners by a gentleman. Uh, he goes by, uh, Coach Rudy as his name. His real name is Keith Matheny, but he was, uh, one of our present, presenters for our district-wide day on the 15th. We also had staff participate in school safety trainings, instructional practices trainings, magic school artificial intelligence training. Uh, CSCA, our classified staff, also had an opportunity on, uh, eight, on August 15th to hear Coach Rudy. And then they had additional training on August 18th. Staff feedback from both certificated and classified members, as it's been rolling in, uh, has been positive. The people have found that the trainings have been useful. They've been practical and they've been able to take ideas right from these trainings and utilize them, which is what we hope can happen for sure. So again, these are pictures showing a lot of those. The new teacher trainings down on the bottom left. We have our, um, community schools training, trauma-informed in particular for those, uh, staffs. And there was quite a turnout, about 65 staff members from our community schools attended that. And then our MTSS, uh, which include our MTSS leads and site administrators. We look at enrollment every year at this board meeting. Uh, last year, we came in at 12,445 in these first couple of days. This year, we're right under that, 12,336. Uh, these enrollments are taken each year at the, from the first few days of school. Tim has, uh, talked to the board before and I know he talks to us in Ed Services. We know that that number does fluctuate. In fact, it does tend to go down a little bit. As last year, for example, for the, most of the year, for the majority, we hovered right around 12,300 students. So that can, that'll show you in 2024 how that trend does seem to go down a little bit.
And I'd like to speak to that very quickly, just because we did have, um, a question from the community about whether this represents a, a trend of declining enrollment. And the answer is, no, this is something that happens every year. If I'm understanding correctly, Tim, as students who are registered in multiple places or who have moved, um, right before summer, as we shake our numbers out. But we're looking at a fairly steady, oh, as compared to last year, right? We're, we're predicting just about the exact same enrollment, is my understanding?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, we were just talking about this as a team earlier and you're, you're right on point. Yeah. In Jaclyn's world, as she says, this is a small, a small number to navigate. Yeah, Tisha?
Yeah, um, so what I heard you say is last year, we hovered around 12,300.
Throughout the year.
Throughout the year, yes. So how did the, but the 12,445, was that the?
Those were taken the first couple of days of enrollment.
Oh, I see.
Yeah, that, so that, these numbers are looking at the first, that's how we could get the 12,336 number, is those are just the first couple of days of this year. So we're looking at same, same, right there.
Okay, but then same, same, we're, uh, we're, if you're looking at the fact that the 20, 2024 number dropped down to 12,300-ish, um, we're starting at a lower place than we did last year. But, and so Jaclyn, I'm, I'm hearing you say that that 109 kids is not significant?
Yeah, so just for a point of clarification, this is enrollment, not attendance. I think that's what you were asking about, Tisha. This is enrollment, okay? Um, from my perspective, um, from a very global district-wide level, um, I think I'm estimating around 45 kids declining between last year and this year, um, which on 12,300 is a pretty nominal amount. It's still 45 kids less, um, and we certainly don't like that. Um, but it's not drastic enough across, um, what, 14 grade levels, um, to cause a panic in any way.
Yeah. Thank you so much for that. Appreciate it.
Good questions. Thank you.
And then we'll get, with October 1st, is that when we do P1 and we get our first official, actual snapshot of?
Census Day is the first Wednesday of October.
First Wednesday of October. Thank you. Okay.
All right. I mentioned Webb, uh, a short time ago. We've had co and extracurricular participation through the summer and, and into the fall now. We have, uh, the ASB hosting, the Associated Student Body hosting Where Everybody Belongs, Webb and Link Crew. They have, uh, welcome back orientations. We've heard some great stories about some mentoring along the way with the older kids and younger kids already. And high school fall athletics are well underway. They, uh, we have an estimated of not, an estimated total of 950 participants right now. Uh, if you haven't yet, check out the schedules of, of the events coming up. There are a lot of great competitions and games, uh, to attend. It's a great chance to cheer on some student athletes. The technology department has been busy. They conducted a major technology refresh, uh, including some computer labs and classroom view sonic panels. You'll see a little bit more, uh, later on that one. They've also implemented some cybersecurity projects to help strengthen district defenses on that piece. Uh, you know, additionally, the IT staff has been a tremendous assistance to all of us during all of these trainings that I've mentioned earlier. We couldn't do it without them. They've provided audio. They've provided visuals for us. Uh, I certainly do not have that skill in my wheelhouse to do that, so I deeply appreciate John Vincent and his crew. Specifically too, I want to thank Phil Morgan and his team for always saying yes to help us when we have to plan things and do things. Uh, as you know, these folks are here during these meetings that help us a lot and they, they work hard and they always have a smile on their face. So they are really appreciated by all of us. School construction has also been going on. Uh, this is a view from the top of Little Chico Creek. I love this picture. I think it's fantastic. The facilities department sent it to me to include in this and I'm really glad they did because it shows the TK parking and building project going on at that school that you don't see from the, you don't see it like this anyway, from the street. So it's, it's a big project, as you can tell. They also have literally just completed, as I look over at their office manager, they've literally just completed their remodel of their front office. They are in. They may not have everything up on the walls yet, but it smells great. It smells fresh and new and, um, it's a beautiful remodeled space. Julie Kissel and her team did a great job. I walked in and I felt it had always been that way. I didn't remember what it looked like before. So, um, it's a great, great tribute to her and her team. And, uh, it does provide a point of entry, a one single point of entry that they can see on that campus, which is unique to what they had before. So it's a, it's an improvement for them for safety. And, uh, I have no doubt it'll be home in a few weeks here.
Hey Tina, I just want to thank Chico Unified and Facilities. Julie Kissel and her team, Gareth, have worked incredibly hard all summer long, up all weekend, every day, just trying to get us. And we moved into our office at 3:00 PM Monday afternoon, set up our desks and had open house at 5:30. So it's been a great weekend. Um, there's nothing on the walls and there's boxes ever, but we are so appreciative. It looks beautiful and we are very excited to finally start moving in.
Yeah, you guys will make it a great new home. Pleasant Valley High School has had a lot of activity going on over there with the location of their temporary portables and some CTE updates. The two pictures are kind of neat to see side by side here because the top two show the, the placement, the progress of placing those portables. Um, it started obviously when, with a lot of dirt around and different things and it has, and on the right, you can see that that is what we see now. It's a home for students. They, uh, are attending classes there. They didn't skip a beat. Classes such as ceramics, studio arts, digital photo, graphic arts, art and design, as well as a drawing class are, are going on as we speak in those classes. The bottom two pictures show updates to CTE classrooms, computer science on the left and a horticulture class on the right. These were just fun photos. I love to look at pictures of things and I love to share them. And, uh, these places have all been full of students the last couple of days. McManus has, as was mentioned just previously, if you haven't gone, go check it out. I totally agree with you. It is finished two years. It has just completed two full years of construction, which is certainly not an easy thing for everybody to go through, but what a beautiful, beautiful school we have. The hallway up there was full of students this week, uh, brand-new classrooms, the basketball courts, which are really fantastic and kids were all, when I was at McManus, they were always out there on those basketball courts. So I know they are being used every day, uh, as well as beautiful mural that was recreated to capture the previous building and, and the culture there at the site. And on the right, the large picture there is the library. It used to be the cafeteria or multipurpose room. So if you've ever been to McManus and saw the old multipurpose room, it is a library now that is absolutely spectacular. So, uh, great pictures there. Uh, also exciting and I loved this picture, uh, from the, from the drone view as well for the new Inspire project. And, uh, I haven't been out to it recently and I'm sure it looks a lot different than that because I know they are moving very quickly on that project. Just some fun pictures here. There were balloons out. There were signs up. There were all kinds of things at schools going on. Uh, the schools looked welcoming and they were ready for students and staff to start this new year. That's an entire big thank you to our maintenance and operations team for all the work they do through the summertime to prepare our school sites for the return of students. Our office staff, including ma, office managers, attendance clerks, registrars, healthcare teams, they also have done much to prepare for the return of students. Deeply appreciated by everybody. This bottom picture here was over at Chico High. You can probably tell from the red, they hosted a meet and greet for their incoming freshmen who are needing special education services at the school, a big school, brand-new school for them. And they had a great turnout of family, families and students there for that event. I'll leave you with some citrus bobcat pride. We are looking forward to a great new year. The team over there all had matching T-shirts that say, "Welcome back. I'm glad you're here." And Eric German from our maintenance and operations department, I loved this shirt when I saw him. I had never seen him wear it. And I asked him if it was his, his shirt for the first day of school every year. And he said, "Yes, indeed it was." If you are old enough like I am and remember the peachy folders, this shirt is a big peachy folder design. So the spirit is alive and well all throughout our schools. They are moving quickly. Uh, we are busy places in our schools and we have a tremendous group of people that support our kids. So that is all we have for you and, uh, we welcome you to anything you want to see or, or visit. Let us know. We'll be happy to take you.
Thank you so much. Are there any questions or comments from the board? I mean, I would just like to say that I hope that you all will, um, convey to your staffs and especially to our teachers, having, I've heard so many good things about how the first day went and creating that open atmosphere where students and families feel welcome on that first day is such an integral part of, you know, setting the whole school year off on a good note. And I've heard it went really well. Um, from all of us, hopefully, uh, please just let all your staff know that we are appreciative and we give a huge thank you. Well done, you guys.
We'd be happy to do that. Thank you for recognizing them.
I, I do have a, a question about just, um, what would be the best way? Like, I know that the beginning of the school year is so hectic, but I would love to go out and, and see more facilities because every, every new one, I'm like, oh wow, look at this. Oh wow, look at this. And so I, I know that, you know, would I contact Heather for her to get ahold of principals to see what would be best? Do, would I just contact principals directly and then CC Greg?
I can help.
I can help, I can help you get arranged.
Okay.
My pleasure.
Okay, awesome, thank you.
Well, thank you guys so much for bringing this information to us, this isn't information only item, we're not going to take any action on it. Any other, any questions or comments from the public about the presentation we've just seen? Awesome, thank you, again, thank you guys so much for all your hard work, we really appreciate you.
Thank you.
And then we'll move on to something a little more boring, um, I'm sorry. We are looking at item eight point two point one, uh, this is a discussion action item regarding resolution sixteen ninety-nine dash two five, authorizing the filing of applications for state allocation board administered charter school facilities programs for Chico Unified.
Hi, good evening, thank you for having me here tonight. I think this is the third resolution we brought forward almost saying the same thing. Uh, since the, uh, proposition two passed last November with state funding, they have been madly at work refining the program. They want to make sure that we understand that a five-year master plan is required for funding and they've rechanged some of the words a little bit, but it basically says the same thing, that you as a board understand that a five-year master plan or an update is required for funding.
We understand.
Yes, so assuming, so the action that we take, assuming that we approve this, is just acknowledging to the state that we understand?
It is, it goes further to say that if you don't supply one, then they will take your money back.
But our, our master plan is in pretty good shape?
Yes.
Okay. Um, are there any other questions of clarification on this item? Do we have any, uh, comments or questions from the public? Doesn't look like it, okay, um, in that case, is there a motion associated with this item?
I move that we approve resolution number sixteen ninety-nine dash two five.
I will second that motion.
Very good, we have a motion by member Hayes and a second by a member Robinson. Uh, any further debate or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is unanimous, thank you very much, Ms. Kissel. And item eight point two point two is regarding the bid approval for the Emma Wilson TK build.
Yes, thank you, uh, we opened competitive bids, um, publicly, we received four bids for the project. Uh, United Building Contractors is the lowest responsive bidder. The bids were all pretty close, uh, four hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars difference between number one and number four. Um, so tonight we are recommending that the board, um, approve United Building Contractors and allow us to enter contract for the project with them.
And just for the sake of clarity and for the public, this includes, uh, the building of three classrooms, two restrooms, a workroom and the TK playground, right?
Yes, that's correct.
Perfect, okay. Are there any other questions? For Ms. Kissel regarding this project, are there any comments or questions from the public? I thought we might have one on this one, okay, um, in that case, do we have a motion?
Okay, I move, um, approval of the bid, uh, for Emma Wilson Elementary Transitional Kindergarten.
I'll second.
All right, very good, we have a motion by Vice President Conkin, I'm, I'm, Conkin, thank you, and a second by Clerk Olson. Uh, any further debate on this one? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? It is unanimous. And we are going to move right on to eight point two three, this is an update, uh, of the emergency declaration due to the fire at PV regarding D building.
And I'm going to take this one.
Please.
Um, so I have come before you at every regular board meeting since May fourteenth with an emergency declaration order to be able to expedite our processes related to, um, building D at Pleasant Valley High School. Um, what I am not doing this evening is bringing that resolution forward again, we are at a point where we, um, don't need to make that declaration that we have normal procurement processes, bid processes, um, going forward for, um, the Pleasant Valley, both temporary housing as well as, um, building D. But I do want to point out that the, as Tina did, mentioned earlier, the portable housing, temporary housing has been finalized and students and staff were able to access that for the first day of school. Building D is now completely empty, so there's no, um, finishing materials on the inside, it's really down to the studs at this point. And a tarp has been, um, placed over the roofing, um, element in order to be able to not have further damage as weather comes in in the winter and fall, um, as we secure a contractor this evening, hopefully on the next agenda item, to then move forward with design and rebuild of building D. So strictly informational this evening, but wanted to give the board and the community an update on where we're at.
Thank you, and again, thank you to all of our staff who was involved in quickly pivoting to find housing for the students uh, in, after the loss of that building, it was really great that we, that everybody worked so hard and so well together and we were able to start day one of the new school year without missing a beat in terms of where students were going to go, that was really great to see. Um, any other questions or comments? Okay, and as you stated, that was informational only, so we're just going to move right on to, um, the item eight two four, which is the lease leaseback prelim service contract approval for the rebuild of building D at PV.
So in mid-July, the district circulated RFQP for lease leaseback contractors for the, uh, building D fire rebuild project, we received two statements of qualifications and proposals. One was from United Building Contractors and the other was from Modern Building Company. Um, these are scored, um, items that come in and compared to each other. United Building Contractors scored more points on their statement of qualifications and their pricing was lower. So we come to you tonight recommending that we move forward with them for the lease leaseback uh, contract for the building D fire rebuild.
Thank you. Are there any technical questions or questions of clarification regarding this one? Is there any public comment? Okay, um, is there a motion associated with this item?
I move approval of, um, the recommendation to give this to United Building Contractors for the lease leaseback preliminary services for Pleasant Valley High School building D.
I second that.
All right, we have a motion by member Robinson, a second by member Hayes. Is there any further discussion or debate? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay? It is unanimous.
Mr. President, I just wanted to clarify, not clarify, it's not confusing, but just point out that this will come back to us again, um, once the, um, GPC, uh, is developed. It's the guaranteed.
Project cost.
Thank you, Julie, guaranteed project cost, it will then again come back to us.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you, Julie, yes. All right, item eight point two point five is an informational only item regarding the forty-five day budget update.
Yes, so back in June, uh, myself and, um, two of the fiscal directors came and presented our original budget for twenty-five, twenty-six and at that point in time, the state had yet to approve their state budget. Um, so what I'm bringing forth this evening, um, in an informational item is what's called a forty-five day budget update, so elements that were not included in the state, that were not included in Chico Unified's budget in June, that were included in the state budget, um, are then brought forward to show the impact on Chico Unified. So, um, there's four material items that really came forward and I will say it's all great news, which isn't always the case, but it ended up that it's, um, four new revenue streams basically for Chico Unified. So on the unrestricted side of the budget, um, the dollars related to the ratio change for our TK program, that went from twelve to one down to ten to one. Um, the state legislature and the governor ended up giving us more money for that, um, so that was about eight hundred thousand, that's coming in on the unrestricted side. On the restricted side of, of the House, there are three, um, funding streams, one is, um, additional funding for learning recovery, which is money we had gotten before, it's one-time money, um, at the, at that point in time, the state cut it about ten percent and now they're backfilling that ten percent, um, so we've worked with Tina and Ed Services, we have a plan on, on how those dollars will be utilized. There's also a student support discretionary block grant that came in at about three point five million, so that's pretty significant for Chico Unified. Again, it is one-time money that has to be spent by June of twenty twenty-five. And the last increase in funding was related to our expanded learning opportunities.
June of twenty twenty-six, or was it really June of twenty twenty-five?
Oh, sorry, June of twenty twenty-nine.
Okay, I was like, oh, okay.
Sorry, June of twenty twenty-nine.
Okay, just, just making sure.
So we have several years to spend it, not, we're overdue, thank you for the clarification.
Okay.
Um, and the last piece is our expanded learning opportunities or what we call the after-school program. Um, so with the new legislation, any district that has an unduplicated pupil count above fifty-five percent um, now gets funded on tier one, um, and that is Chico Unified this year, so we historically have been funded on tier two funding. So now we're on tier one, um, so that brought in, um, it's four point eight million dollars to the district, so it's, it's about a nine million dollar program now to offer TK six, um, a nine-hour day, um, during the school year and then an additional thirty days outside of the school year, so that's really exciting. It will take us a little bit of time to ramp that program up, um, I know Heather Supuentes and Callan Quoc Hennessy have been working very, you know, diligently to figure out what that plan looks like, um, so that, we do have a one-year grace period, so we didn't have to first day of school implement right away, we have a one, one-year grace period. The goal, I think, is to have it fully implemented for a second semester in January after winter break, so been lots of meetings, lots of meetings, of what that looks like and how that impacts our school, um, both for families, but also what does that mean for nutrition services, because they offer a supper program? What does that mean for our custodial staff, because it's more kids utilizing more classrooms for a longer day? So that's part of that comprehensive look at, at what this does to our schools, but it's ultimately a great opportunity, so. Those are the funding streams, that's the update on the budget, unless there's any other questions.
I do have a question, um, sorry, just because the, uh, the blurb on the, um, agenda mentions that there's an overall negative change in the restricted side of, of nine million. And I hear a lot of positive stuff, is that?
That is because we've gotten one-time money in prior years.
Yeah.
And then we're spending it down, but because we got the revenue in prior years, I don't get to recount the revenue again, so you're spending it down over multiple years, so it's a smaller negative change in found dollars. So when I was here in June, it was twelve, twelve million dollars and now it's nine million dollars.
Okay, so this is the negative change we already assumed we were having adjusted, given the new numbers. Not, we're, not a sudden, it read to me like, oh, the sudden nine million dollar hit, and I was a little concerned.
No.
Okay, thank you, that makes much more sense?
Yes.
Thank you, I'm member Robinson.
Yes, oh, excuse me, um. Jaclyn, I know the difference in planning for one-time monies versus, um, ongoing money when the, you know, when they're funded is ongoing. What can you tell us about what might be, um, discussions looking like and with what personnel for what to do with the one-time money?
So the learning recovery one-time money will go into our existing plan with, with Ed Services and that's historically covered, counselors, additional time for our targeted case managers. The student support block grant money of about three point five million, there's been talk, um, kind of amongst this group of, of admin here at the table to really focus on one-time expenditures for one-time money, right? There's kind of a, a golden rule at the state that says, don't use one-time money for anything that eats, right? Just because you don't want to put yourself in a predicament a couple of years from now where you now have staff and you don't have ongoing funding. So, um, we are looking at school safety, um, as a priority, um, to spend that three point five million, but it's very cursory and very preliminary as far as, um, what those dollars will be spent on.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you, are there any other questions or comments? Um, and did we have any member of the public wish to speak on this one? All right, seeing none, this is again an informational only item, uh, Jaclyn, thank you very much for, uh, keeping us up to date on everything that's going on. I know it's been kind of a moving target, uh, between the state and the federal level to find out what money we get and when. But we are going to move on to, um, item eight point three point one, this is a discussion action item regarding a tentative agreement with CSEA Chapter one-ten.
Thank you, President Lando, so you can see here in the agenda item, this is a tentative agreement between the California School Employees Association and the Chico Unified School District. This agreement includes changes in language related to, specifically to Article two and six of the collective bargaining agreement, uh, resulting from a recent California Public Employee Retirement System inquiry. The major changes are related to some specific language on our salary schedule, as well as identifying specific staff who would be eligible for, for transfer. Um, as you're considering this item, I would like to recognize, um, CSEA President, Chapter one-ten, Kelly Searle, for all of her work with Mike Allen, the other person I'd like to recognize, they spent a ton of time trying to be sure that not only did they address issues that Pers was concerned with, but they, they planned for future generations of teachers, so I just want to throw a shout out to the two of them, they spent a lot of time in quite a few iterations of this TA as it's presented for board approval tonight.
Thank you very much, it's my understanding was that this was an item that would have accidentally potentially prevented some of our retirees from collecting everything that we had promised them and I really appreciate, we all really appreciate how quickly all of our various organizations and CSEA worked together to make sure that was resolved, um, to take care of our, of our employees, that's important. So thank you.
Member Robinson said, you, you, you meant future generations of classified employees, not teachers.
I'm sorry, I misspoke, I apologize, member Robinson.
But the future generations of teachers will be very grateful to have those classified employees, for sure.
Absolutely, are there any, uh, questions of clarification regarding this item? Do we have any public comment on this item? Uh, seeing none, do we have a motion?
I motion approval of the TA between CUSD and CSEA Chapter one-ten.
I'll second that then, very good, we have a motion by member Hayes and a second by Lando. Um, any further discussion on this item? All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Okay, it is unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, um, that was the, uh, last action item on our agenda, we're going to move on to items from the floor. Are there any new items that just popped up that you guys want to talk about? I mean, you never know. Um, seeing none, uh, item ten is for board members to request to agendize an item, we don't have any of those that were submitted. Does anybody have an item that they want to make at least staff aware of at this point? He's making this really easy for me today, I appreciate that. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
I so move.
I'll second that too, all those in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous, uh, we are adjourned, thank you very much.